Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Yarmouth Zoning Board of Appeals. We have six matters on our petition tonight. The first matter is Petition 5059, Pinecone Construction, property located at 50 Park Ave., West Yarmouth, Massachusetts. They were seeking a special permit of variance for relief. However, we've gotten a letter that they wish to withdraw their application. Based on setback averaging, they no longer need it. They have submitted a letter requesting as such. Any questions from the board? None?
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal.
Without prejudice?
Without prejudice.
Second?
Second. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Carries unanimously. Dolores, do you want me to write all their names in here? Or do you know it? You have them? Okay, all right. Next matter on our agenda is Petition 5061. This is Congro Remodeling. Property location, 17 Joyce Street, South Yarmouth, Mass. The applicant seeks a special permit and/or variance for front setback relief, and they are requesting to withdraw their petition without prejudice. Received a... Excuse me, that's a different letter. Letter dated December 19th. No one's here on that matter, I take it? Anybody here on that matter, Congro? No? Okay. "To the zoning board of appeals, on behalf of the petitioner, I am requesting to withdraw the application without prejudice for the property located at 17 Joyce Street, South Yarmouth. The homeowners have decided that they will not move forward with the project. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter. Basil Congro." Any questions from the board? Anybody prepared to make a motion?
Make a motion to accept the withdrawal without prejudice. Second?
Motion made by Jay, seconded by Dick. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? That matter carries unanimously. That brings us to our third matter, Petition 5062, Kurt Baker, 33 Hatch Road, South Yarmouth. The applicant seeks a variance from Section 401.1.1 and 401.1.2 to allow a camper to be stored in the front of the property. Is Mr. Baker here tonight? Mr. Baker is not here tonight. I have a memorandum from the building department dated January 11th. "The building department conducted a site visit to the above property today and confirmed that one of the campers has been removed. The second camper is parked next to the garage and is partially beyond the front lot line. Respectfully submitted, Tim Sears, Deputy Building Commissioner." Questions from the board? It appears that the-
I just have a comment, anyway, Sean. The... I guess by the front lot line, what he means is the second trail, and they have, they moved the first trailer, and the second trailer unfortunately was bigger than the first trailer, so it sticks out further, and it is sticking out beyond the front line of the house, which I think still makes it not kosher. Personally, is it something I can live with, probably, but that's up to other people.
He's seeking a variance on that one, so...
I think, I mean, I haven't looked at it closely, but I would think that there's a small fence there, and it seemed to me that a part of that fence was removed. It could be pushed even further back, but that's my guess.
Violation notice was issued on September 7th, 2023. Mr. Baker was here previously. He's not here tonight. I'd suggest to the board that he's still in violation, that we entertain a motion to find him in violation. Or?
No, I mean, I'm gonna...
Let me strike that.
I don't want to lay a precedent where, again, this... Okay, well, it's only two feet or three feet or four feet, so I'll let it go. I mean, then it puts the building department in more of a conundrum, which I'm sure they'd just as soon not be, and I have a feeling there's probably a way that that could be tucked in there further, so...
Well, in terms of what he's asking for tonight, I don't think we have to find him in violation. I misspoke because the building department has already found him in violation. What we're here to determine is whether we're going to grant him a special permit or a variance. Seeing that he's in noncompliance...
He's the one.
Is anybody prepared to make a motion relative to the special permit, which he doesn't qualify for special permit?
Well, I'll make a motion to accept a special permit.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
He's only requesting a variance.
He is? I thought I saw a special permit here. Am I wrong? Variance, I'm sorry. I stand corrected.
And I'm just finally getting my brain working and saying, should I be here, sitting on this? I'm gonna think about it. I might be supposed to be down outside.
Right, this is the one you asked. So I'd like to make a motion to-
I won't act on it.
I'd like to make a motion to grant the variance, and, you know, I'm going to be against it, but... Isn't that the way it works?
Well, you can either vote to grant the variance and then-
Reject it.
You can vote either for it or against it, or you can make a motion to deny the variance. It's up to you. You're the motion maker.
Well, I'd like to make a motion to deny the variance, just straight up.
Okay.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, John's seconding to deny variance. Any discussion on the motion? Just for the record-
I shouldn't be voting on this, because I am a member of-
Joe gonna recuse yourself on this?
Yeah.
Okay. Then it'll be the four of us that are gonna vote on this? Dick will be recusing himself on this matter. The only thing that I would chime in on is it's apparent that he's in violation. He came before this board after a violation notice was given to him. He represented to the board that he was going to remove or put that trailer behind the front lot line before this hearing. He's failed to do so, and so, in my opinion, he's still in violation. So I don't think he qualifies for variance relief. He does not meet the criteria. So I would urge the board to vote against this variance and deny it. Any other comments from the board? Hearing none? Moving the question? All those in favor... Oh, this is a denial. All those-
Favor of the denial.
Favor of denying the request for variance? Please vote. Signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. All those opposed? Hearing none? The variance is denied. Next matter on our agenda is Petition 5069, Hanuman Darshan LLC. Property location, 961 Route 28, South Yarmouth, Mass. It's in a B2 zoning district. The applicant seeks to reverse the decision of the building commissioner and allow transient occupancy that exceeds the temporary and short-term occupancy ordinarily and customarily associated with motel and hotel use. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. For the record, my name is Mark Bedrow. I'm an attorney with an office in Hyannis, and I'm here representing Hanuman Darshan LLC in connection with this petition. The manager of the LLC, Darshi Gandhi, recently heard from the Commonwealth that sometime before the end of February, 100% of the migrants staying at his motel will be moved to a larger facility, most likely off Cape. These facilities will have a better opportunity to provide food and room for the families. That having been said, I would respectfully request a continuance to March 14th for this matter, and at that point, it probably will be moot. I'd also indicate that I'd agree to extend the time for the board to make a decision to approximately 30 days from that date, and I have a hand-scratched letter that I just drafted a few minutes ago.
Okay, all right. Okay, so was there a specific date that you're looking for? Did you say a date?
The March 14th date?
March 14th?
The first date after the end of February.
When's our next hearing date after March 14th?
Mr. Chairman, it's March 28th.
March 28th? Okay. Might I consider that the board continue this matter? Or recommend that the board continue this matter until March 28th for further hearing? If at that time this matter is not rectified, then we'll go forward with the hearing?
That sounds great.
Okay. Can you sign an extension agreement for us, please, Attorney Bedrow?
Sure, I have my own, but I'll be happy to sign another one.
Okay, we've got one right here. We've got a form, if you just want to sign that.
Thank you, appreciate your attention.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody here on that matter tonight? No? Okay. Yeah, we had a vote on it. Anybody prepared to make a motion to continue this matter until March 28th?
Sound moved.
Second?
Okay. Okay, so there's a motion to continue... Motion made by Dick, seconded by John, to continue this matter until March 28th for further hearing. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none? Carries unanimously. We'll see you on March 28th.
Sounds great. Thank you all.
Thank you, Attorney Bedrow. I'm sorry?
Way to represent the town. The town of Yarmouth, the people of Yarmouth, the taxpayers of Yarmouth. We have to pay for all of this.
Well, I'm not sure if you understood what was going on. I just asked if there was anybody here on this hearing. No one answered me.
It doesn't matter, anyway.
Well, what...
I submitted a letter.
Okay, well, what we're doing here is they've made a representation that the state is going to move the people that are currently there as of March 14th. So if that doesn't happen, please come back on March 28th, and we will have this hearing again.
And then we'll go into July and August, and then the vacation is coming. They have no place to stay.
Well, if any of the weather gets better, are our kids gonna go remote like they did in New York?
No, 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 no. We'll see you on the 28th. Okay? Thank you for coming, folks.
Wait till elections come. You wanted to speak? That's when you wanted to type up?
Okay. The next matter on our agenda is Petition 5070, Gabriela Dos Santos Rigo, doing business at Skyline Childcare. Property location at 48 Butler Ave., West Yarmouth. It's in an R-25 zoning district. The applicant seeks a special permit per 202.5 P7A use to allow a family daycare for up to six children. Are you here? Come right up to the table and have a seat. How are you tonight?
Good. Um, I'm sorry.
Tell us a little bit about your petition?
Yes, I am Beatrice. Nice to meet you. I will help her with the language.
Okay, so she's the petitioner?
Yes.
My name is Gabrielle.
Yeah. Okay.
And he wants to know what are your plans for daycare?
I'm located in Yarmouth. I installed daycare to be able to...
Okay.
To assist the children and to be able to give them a more specific care and prepare the children for school, for kindergarten. So all the assistance necessary for adults up to five years.
Okay. So she's happy to be here. So basically, her plan for the daycare, she's really excited to open in the town of Yarmouth. Her plan is to open a daycare so she can give it more support for the families, prepare them to kindergarten, preschool. And she... Yeah, she really loves doing that and being close to the families and give all that support, for education especially.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Now, this is gonna be in her house, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Do you have a plan that shows us where in your house that you're gonna be doing this?
Do you have a plan of where it will be in your house for daycare?
I have a reserved space exclusively for the children. Where we do activities. It's the part that they go to, for lunch, for meal. And they also have access to the kitchen, the hall. We have a prepared living room for the children, all closed, with the appropriate toys. Because I talk about using other spaces. And we work together with the children, with the kids. So we have a very good space.
Okay, so she doesn't have written down in the paper, but her plan for the house is they will have the proper space in the living room so they can rest. They have the playground outside. That's proper for them. She prepared also a space in the kitchen so they can do culinary, so they can learn more about hands-on. She has a space for activities, and that will be, let's say, kitchen, playground, and living room. That'll be the space for the kids to play and have their...
Okay. So... Who do you live with right now?
With who do you live with right now?
My husband and two children, one one and one six.
Are they your kids? So she lives with her husband and her... Are they your kids?
One is a girl, the other one is a boy.
And she has two kids, a girl and a boy. Seven and eleven.
Seven and eleven. So they go to school during the day? Okay. So they'd be going... They'd be at school while you were doing the daycare?
So they would be at school right now with the daycare? Yes, that's right. They'll be in school.
And how many days a week would you be doing this?
And what days of the week would you be working on this? Monday through Friday.
Monday through Friday. And what hours of the day would you be doing that?
What would be the day care? So it'll be 7:00 AM until 5:00 PM.
Okay. And are you properly licensed by the state?
Do you think it's authorized by the state? Yes.
Okay. Do we have a copy of that in our file?
I don't believe so, Mr. Chairman.
I don't think I saw that, yeah.
She doesn't have any more copies of it. We do have the copy, but in the photo, can we send by email? Does that work for you guys? I'm sorry for not printing it down.
That's okay. All right, so you are licensed?
Yes.
I looked up on the website, and I didn't see any license for this daycare center at this location.
Okay.
She looked on the website and didn't find any license for the daycare.
Skyline Children Care? What's your name? Gabi? My name is Gabrielle.
If you don't have the name of the daycare, it's in my name, Gabrielle. Yes. Can she show you the picture of the...
When's she come up and show me first?
So she's saying that if it's not the name of the daycare that she gave, it's in her name. So that's... She has like two options.
I looked it up. You can look it up by your name, the name of the daycare center, or the address.
Okay.
And I wasn't coming up with it.
Okay.
So I don't know.
So she looked for the address and didn't find it in the system, but by the photo.
Well, she's been... She got issued a license. Have you been operating a daycare?
Have you worked in a daycare?
I've been in a daycare since March 8th.
She has a daycare since 18th of March, March 18th.
So you've been operating at your current location? Yeah, let me pass that down to Barbara.
No license?
No, actually licensed.
With the license, yes.
On your website.
Okay. Let me show that to... Okay, so you are licensed. You've been operating. And do you have six children right now?
Six, yes.
Okay, okay, okay. Would you be able to draw us a little floor plan of your house to show us where the children are in the daycare?
Do you want to design a model inside your house? Where would the daycare be? Yes, she can.
Okay.
Sorry.
You don't have to do it right now, but if you could submit that and give it to our administrative assistant, Dolores?
Do you want to design it another day and send it by email?
I have the map already.
Yes, she does have it drawn, so she can send it. She already has it.
Any questions about parking?
Yeah, and do all the mothers and fathers arrive at the same time?
Normally, the moms and the dads arrive at the daycare at the same time?
No.
Normally, no. But it can happen that like one children and another children come.
Okay, so they're staggered, the times that they drop off?
Yes. Normally, it's more random times they arrive, right? Yes.
Same is true for pickup?
Sorry?
Same is true for pickup? They all pick up at different times?
And for the bus, too? Would it be the same thing? Yes.
How many parking spaces do you have in front?
About the parking area, how many parking areas would you have?
My driveway has a space for about four, five cars.
Four to five cars. You can hold it.
Anything else, Jay?
Is the... Do they go out in the backyard at all? Playground, is it fenced in in the backyard? Is that...
For the playground, does the kids go?
I'm assuming that's the only place they play outside?
So on the back of the house, here is where the playground would be, right? Do they have fences?
Yes, the playground is fully fenced. All okay by the state license. With a synthetic grime, all the supports are available.
Okay, so it is in the backyard. It does have the structure around. It has like synthetic grass on it, and it has, well, the gens already... The... Yes, the license, they already approved it, so it's all.
What are the ages of the children?
What would be the age of the children?
The ones I have are one and ten months, and the others are three, over three years old.
So she has one with one...
One and ten months.
One year and ten, and the rest are three, over three years old.
I work with children aged four months to five months.
But on her contract is for four months until five years.
Okay. And do they... Do you have a space where the children can sleep versus the play in the house? Are they separated?
In the house, it would be separated from where the children sleep and the rest. For example, where they do activities. No, it will be all in the same area.
All in the same?
Mm-hmm.
All right. So, yeah. Okay. Dick, do you have any questions?
I'm concerned about one of the letters that's been written by Ina Butter as to the conditions of the property and the children running loose. I don't know if that's your children or the daycare children, or both. And that there are certain dangerous circumstances potentially in terms... And I did drive by it, and it was, I wouldn't call it terribly well capped up in terms of toys and stuff and brush and quite a bit of stuff on the property that I didn't think was terribly conducive to a daycare center, to be honest with you. You know, I would be concerned about that. I mean, the, I guess, question is, what are the kids that are running around? Your kids or...
Neighbors. Okay. Then he said he walked past the house and he saw some tools or something. At the moment, he thought it might not be very secure, but he saw children around the house running. And he wants to know if it was his children or the neighbors' or some friend's.
It could be my children with the neighbors in front. They're very friends with each other. My kids. My kids with their friends in front, probably.
Okay. So she said that might be her son and her daughter with the neighbors that they are friends with, but it wouldn't be the children from the daycare?
Is the backyard fenced or not?
Fenced.
Fully fenced.
You mean like around?
Like there's a fence around where the children would play when they're out.
Okay.
And is it secure to keep them from running?
Okay. On the back, would the fence be fully fenced around? Yes, she said that's completely...
Is it just a wire fence? I didn't see too much on the sides.
It would be...
I have photos if they want to.
Yeah, she does have the pictures. Do you want to take a look at that, too?
Yeah, I would, actually.
Yes, he would like to. Okay, that's perfect. It's better to explain. I'm sorry.
You know, and again, under these petitions like this, it's certainly as good as the chair pointed out to have some kind of plan and show what kind of areas are being used for what. Where is the household area of the owners? And where is the area being used by the children? I think that that's something that really should be part of this, as well as the copy of the license, et cetera.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Can she go to you and show?
Come right up. Why don't you go show him first, as a matter of fact, and then you can write down and show all of us.
That's all the questions I have for now, anyways.
Barbara, do you have some questions?
No, I'm just concerned that there's no separate sleeping area for the kids. No, I'm just concerned, um, that there's no separate, um, sleeping area for the kids.
Okay.
Tem a parte de fora?
Fully fenced going around?
Isso, tá todo cercado, todo ao redor?
So if the kids are out there, they cannot get out of the fence, correct?
Uh-huh, yes, definitely.
As crianças, por exemplo, daycare, elas não usam o espaço de fora sem, é, que não seja o cercado.
Yes, yes, so the kids from the daycare, they never use the other space that is without the fence. So it's all, all around.
Yep. Oh, it's a wire, wire fence, that's why I didn't see it too well, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Did you want to say it back?
Yes, thank you. Oh, okay, I see.
Do you have anything else, Barbara?
No, no.
John, questions, comments?
I just have, you're the only caretaker on the property?
Você?
The only adult?
Você seria a única adulta na, na propriedade, no caso na casa?
Tem o meu esposo, mas no período que eu estou trabalhando com as crianças, ele tá trabalhando fora.
Mas assistente seria só?
Yeah, it would be only her. Um, normally the husband is working in the time of the daycare, so he wouldn't be at home. Um, so yes, in the house.
I'm concerned about, what sounds like a lot of kids, and not just the kids that are under care. Uh, your, your two children come home, uh, their friends come over, you know, who, who's watching all these children? All of a sudden, we've got six and now potentially ten? You know, it sounds like in, in, um, in a different age group as well.
Então, ele tá preocupado sobre a, quando as suas crianças chegam em casa, por exemplo? Aí aumentaria, um, o número de crianças? E caso eles trouxesses algum amiguinho, ou algo do tipo? Quem taria olhando essas crianças?
É, eu tenho licença pra trabalhar com seis crianças. A, a minha menina, ela é inclusa nessa, nessas seis crianças, e geralmente no período que eu estou trabalhando, meus filhos não são autorizados a receber nenhum amigo em casa.
Okay. And so, um, so she's licensed for six kids, um, but her daughter, she's included on the six, on the, between the six kids. And, um, on the period of the daycare, the time of the daycare, she's not allowed to have another kids. Like, I mean, like, if her, if her son wants to bring a friend, they are not allowed in the house. So that wouldn't happen of having friends there.
Very good, thank you, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Well, so, your kids come home from school at what time?
Que horas normalmente que suas crianças chegam da escola, seus filhos?
O, o tio onze chega às três e vinte, e a menina?
So, um, her son, that is eleven years old, he comes three twenty, around three twenty, and her daughter, she comes around four.
Quatro?
E vinte.
Four twenty.
What time do they get out of school?
Que horas normalmente eles saem da escola?
O Lucas sai, ele sai três e cinco mais ou menos, e a Melissa sai três e vinte mais ou menos.
So her son normally go, gets out of school three, three five.
Three thirty-five?
Três e trinta e cinco?
A menina que tá no, no first grade sai três trinta, sai três e vinte.
Okay, so her, her daughter, um, she normally gets off the school three, three twenty.
What time she gets out of school?
Yes, and the son?
What's she go to?
Qual escola ele vai? La frequência?
Elementary, um, Station Avenue Elementary.
Station Ave Elementary, okay.
Yes.
E seu filho?
Ele escuta na intermed- inter, aí ela consegue falar.
Intermediate?
Intermediate.
Your son goes to the intermediate school?
Yes, uh-huh.
E qual seria o horário que ele sairia da escola, três e cinco?
O Lucas sai umas três e cinco, ele chega de três a dezoito, três e vinte.
Yes, so he would be out of school three five, and he gets like three eighteen at home, three twenty, mostly three twenty.
Okay, okay. Um, any further questions? I do have one piece of correspondence, um, April Barabee, lives at, uh, well, she's got her address at one oh, wait a minute, I got the wrong one here.
You're correct, Mr. Chairman, that's the right one.
Is this the right one?
Yes, sir.
It's on the corner, yeah. This is, oh, 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 I see, okay, alright, alright. Um, "To make concern, I am completely opposed to having a daycare", uh, oh, petition number four, five, I couldn't read that. "Directly next to my property, Butler Ave is used as a through, a throughway to all streets behind us. Speeding is a very big issue that never gets addressed. There is no fence dividing our property, um, I guess, junk including metal and glass." Okay, thank you with that. "These handwritten letters can be tough. Is always thrown carelessly between our property. The Dos Santises have been running a daycare since they moved in. Um, constant screaming and wandering children, curious about my yard, and my dog was a nightmare all summer." Um, for, what is that word?
Furthermore.
Furthermore, okay. "They apparently know the occupants in the duplex directly across. The kids from both properties are always crossing the street carelessly, and almost getting hit by a car several times. The kids of their own are never supervised. When they first moved, they constantly were going door to door to sell random things. They got out of their kitchen several times past eight PM, the list goes on. I am single with no kids. I work very hard to..." What do you think that word is?
Run?
Run? "By myself, uh, it is not just, it is not fair to subject this neighborhood with more traffic and more noise than we already have. It's just going to be a nightmare, so I strongly oppose. Signed, April Barabee." That's the only correspondence I think we have on this one. Okay. You wish to respond to that?
I was, I was trying to, to go over the letter, it's a little bit complicated.
Okay, essentially what they're saying is, is there are children running all over the place constantly, and there's debris that goes into her yard as well from your, your house.
Basicamente o que ele falou, resumindo, é que sempre tem crianças correndo na rua, é, que isso pode ser perigoso, e também da parte do vizinho, lá não é muito protegido, então pode sim causar algum acidente.
Yeah, okay, sobre.
A parte do, ele falou que tem, sempre tem crianças correndo na rua, sem supervisão.
Mas, mas lá na rua, tem bastante crianças, não, não são necessariamente meus filhos. Meus filhos quando eles estão brincando, eles estão sob a minha supervisão.
Ele quer dizer assim que, ele acha assim que pelo fato das crianças tá correndo ali, tem muito movimento de criança, os pais não supervisionam, então como a sua casa vai ter um daycare, tem muito movimento de carro, pode causar um acidente com as crianças e tal.
Okay, yeah, so we're trying to resume the letter for her. Um, so yeah, she does understand. Um, she said that normally there is a lot of kids in the road. So normally, she is watching her kids, the, her son and her daughter.
She is?
Yes, she is.
She's watching her kids, who's watching the daycare kids?
Quando as crianças tá do lado de fora, quem tá olhando o daycare? Tipo assim?
Quando as minha, as minhas crian, meus filhos?
Isso.
Não, os meus filhos, no momento que eu estou trabalhando, eles não brincam lá fora.
So in the moment that she's working, her daughter and her son is not outside, they are inside of the house.
With the other children?
With the other children, yes.
Okay. And you said the ages of the children that you watch are what?
Qual são as, as idades das crianças que você cuida, de novo?
É, eu tô com um tio onze.
She does has one with one year old and ten months.
Que é dois, três anos.
And two of three years old.
Said you, they're good, they're approved for four months to like five years.
Right, I just want to get an idea what hers has, so you got one that's a little less than two, then you have two three-year-olds. And how about the others?
E os outros? Você tem seis ao total?
Não, estou com as, com as seis vagas completas.
So she only has those, she doesn't have all the six, six childrens.
So right now you have three children that you're watching?
Yes, mas sua filha é inclusa também, né? Yes, and her, her daughter, her daughter is included. Her daughter, ele tem sete anos? She has six years old. Her daughter?
Six years old?
Mm-hmm, so that counts as four.
Okay. Alright, is there anything else you'd like to add at this time?
Você quer só mais uma coisa?
Alright.
Não, she's on the?
Um, any more questions for the petitioner from the board? Alright, we're gonna close the hearing to the public.
Is there anybody that wants to talk in the public, or?
Is there anybody here that wishes to be heard on this matter? Either speak in favor or opposition?
Eu vou tentar entender this. I, I don't know.
Come on up to the microphone.
Me for another reason. And, um, then I heard about daycare. I was daycare provider for thirty-three years for the state of Massachusetts, and they have very strict regulations.
You say your name and?
My name's Louise Morgan. I had a daycare in Worcester for thirty-three years. I was licensed, federally accredited, and they have very strict rules. The licenses come in and check these homes, they do have to follow by a lot of rules, and it's difficult, and there are neighbors that will complain just 'cause, "Oh, I don't want the noise," or "I don't want this." But the state is in such need for good childcare.
Yeah.
I just had to speak on their behalf, it's just frustrating to me right now.
How often?
I have retired.
How often do you, if you know, do they inspect?
They have to come annually, every three years you're relicensed. In the state of Massachusetts, you can have six children, three under the age of two, as long as one is fifteen months and walking. I had a license for eight. I did it myself, I had a lot of special need children, I had DCF, EEC, every regulatory agency come into my home, and it ran beautifully. As far as children sleeping in the play area, yes, you can. You have to make sure it's safe and secure for the children, they have to have designated areas, and they checked, every year they would come in, do a random, non, um, you don't know if they're coming, they'll show unannounced. Every three years, they will let you know when you're coming for relicensing, and, um, there's a lot you have to go through.
Yes.
Your liability insurance, your CPI, your first aid. I mean, I could rattle off the regulations front and back, 'cause it, I just retired, and I'm very strong on this, and I'm just frustrated, I'm sorry.
But I have to speak on their behalf.
Just so you know, ma'am, we've, we've licensed many, many daycares in this town.
Okay, thank you so much. It's just different, I, I've never heard of having to get a permit for it.
Well, we, we, we regulate them as well as the state.
Yeah. Well, I just wanted to speak on their behalf because I, it, I did a lot, a lot with the state, so.
Thank you very much.
We do appreciate it, thank you so much. Thank you. Yes.
Any else? Anybody else wish to speak in favor or opposed to this matter? Seeing none, we're gonna close this to, to board discussion. Anybody like to begin a discussion on this matter?
I guess the one thing I'd like to have is some kind of diagram for this space.
Well, that would certainly be a condition.
Just, just to know that there's a play area and a rest area, and, you know, just the comings and goings, I think.
Is the kitchen an appropriate play area?
Well, I don't know about that, I mean, I, you know.
You said that was one of the rooms that?
I,
I think that's very dangerous.
We have licensed or permitted, should I say, we don't license, and the state does, but we've permitted a lot of these daycares. We, we have certain conditions with them. I think some of the concerns that I have with this petitioner is she has two children of her own, and there seems to be a history of her kids and all the kids in the neighborhood just running around. She's gotta be able to look out the window and see them, so if she's looking at them, who's looking at these little kids? That's a concern of mine. Secondly, we don't have a plan to show exactly where the daycare area is located in her house, and I would have concerns with the kitchen as well, because of obvious things in the kitchen, stoves and knives and all sorts of stuff that kids could get hurt on. So I don't think that's a proper place to have childrens in the kitchen. Normally, there's a space that's delineated, like a family room with a, another room attached, or they convert garages into these, so, um, I would be more comfortable to see a plan where exactly these children are gonna be. Given that this petitioner has two children that are fairly active, although one is being watched, I would be inclined to wanna limit it to four children with her, and not give her six, because she has two of her own that she's gotta watch. Although the eleven-year-old, you got an eleven-year-old?
Você tem de onze anos, né?
Yes, she does have.
Eleven-year-olds can probably watch themselves, but, um, you know, when, when you're at seven to five, I mean, that's, that's ten hours. Ten hours of watching kids is a, is a lot. It's not like a four-hour babysitting deal, and you can get everybody to watch TV and behave themselves. Now, smaller kids, you know, a couple of them three years old, one, two, they get frustrated, they cry, they, you know, this or that, then it's a lot of distraction, just seems to me. I, it's not that I'm opposed to her, she's obviously licensed, but, um, I for one would like to see a little more information on this, I'd like to see a plan submitted, and, if I would have voted in favor of this, I would put certain conditions, no children in the front yard. Um, we get the ages. Right now, I, I really wouldn't be comfortable having her to have more than four children. She's been operating already for a year. Is this the first daycare you've ever run?
Esse seria seu primeiro daycare?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So is that something that we would ask for, like, they ask them for continuance and then bring more documents, or?
Well, I think the only thing that I, I'm cons, well, when I heard the word kitchen, what rooms are you in now that you're using? I, I think we need to see a plan of her house, that's what I think we need to see, yeah.
Photos, maybe photos of where the children are sleeping.
That, that's a good idea.
Yeah.
She had on her phone some, some big, she had on her phone some pictures of the kids' area.
Oh, okay.
Good to have them in.
It would be, it would be good to have them in the folder, yeah.
It's where they should be.
Well, no, 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 normally we, and, and the next one doesn't have any, has any fans either, so. I hope they're listening. Well, I don't know if they're here.
Yeah, I think it's the young lady behind.
Okay, alright, well, we'll discuss that as well.
I know I'd personally like to see the plan and photos in, in the file before we made any motions or votes.
How, how busy are we coming up? How many we have on in the next one? How many we have on in the next one?
Next one in January twenty-fifth, Mr. Chairman, has four, so if you wanna-
Why don't we stick her on that one, and we'll, uh, is it already closed off for that date?
Actually, you know what, you're right, I'm sorry. Yes, that was January third was the deadline for that one, so.
Is that, even if we continue her, we can't stick her in?
Actually, you know what, that's right. If it's continued, it wouldn't have to be advertised, you're right.
It wouldn't have to be advertised, yeah.
So, yes, back to January twenty-fifth, you could put that in there.
Okay. This is, this is what we'd like to do. We would like to continue your matter, and we'd like to have you come in and submit a plan showing a diagram of your home, where your daycare is located. We'd also like to see pictures of the inside of the house, where the kids are gonna be. Now, where you have the kids, do they have TVs or anything in the room, or?
Yes, they would have TVs, all the tivris, toys, um,
Alright, okay.
Tivris in the wall.
Alright.
Okay.
Now, I, I think you mentioned the kitchen as well. We, we're not really, we're not really in favor of the idea of you having children in the kitchen. Okay.
That's okay.
Did you tell the state where you were gonna have the daycare inside your house?
Yes.
Did you submit any plans to the state?
Yes, um, on her license, it does has the places in her house approved for her to have the kids around.
And did the state approve the kitchen?
Yes, the kitchen, they have like protectors and everything, the knives, it's not around, and all of that. Um, I have the, in the picture of the license that she showed, it's specific in there, if you wanna take a look again.
We, we're gonna need a copy of your license as well. So this is what we wanna do. We wanna continue you till the next hearing date, which is January twenty-fifth. We'd like you to submit a diagram, a plan, that shows where they're gonna be in your house. We'd like to see pictures of that area. We want a copy of your license. Missing anything? And, and that's it.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, do you want photos of the outside at all, or?
Yeah, take some photographs of the outside of the house too, please. Alright, um, is, is that all we need? Yeah, we need you to sign an extension here, an extension agreement, okay, before you leave, okay? Wait right there first, we'll have you sign in a minute. Okay, so, uh, are we good? Anybody prepared to make a motion to continue this matter until January twenty-fifth?
So moved.
Second. Motion made by Dick, seconded by Jay, to continue this matter for further hearing on January twenty-fifth. You know what we need from you, right? What we'd like you to do is submit those all to Dolores ahead of time, so we all have copies of them by the time we get in here, okay? You just give them to her, and she'll give us the copies. Alright, okay, very good. Alright, thank you very much, and we'll see you on January twenty-fifth. Alright, thank you. Oh, all of us in favor by continuing till January twenty-fifth, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Not hearing none? Okay, we're good till January twenty-fifth, they're signing the extension. See, I told you, I get confused when you give me this packet here, I'm, I'm lost.
Well, I'll keep you in line. Your team approves.
Yeah. Okay, alright, I just put those things down, so I guess I'll get that back. And that's by April's... Alright, let's talk about the next petition here. You guys all know one another? Okay, that's fine, that's fine, okay. The next petition is petition five zero seven one, Jessica Ruse. Property location at one forty-four West Yarmouth Road. And it's R twenty-five zoning district, and the applicant seeks a special permit per two oh two point five, uh, use table P seven. Uh, a use to allow a family daycare for up to six children. Are you Jessica? You are, okay. Tell us a little bit about your daycare. Is it like her daycare? Okay, so you're, you're in your house? In your house?
Yes, so she is in the house, and, um, she rents the house, and- Yes, so she opened in March of last year, um.
Okay.
And her license is for six kids, too.
Okay. Who is Lucas Viera?
Um, it's the owner of the house.
And he's giving you permission to operate a daycare there?
Yes, he is.
Do you have permission in writing or verbally?
So he agreed on, in both ways. Um, she has the insurance of the daycare, so he did, um, sign it there, too. So he agreed in the, in both ways.
Okay.
And he signed also the, the petition.
Oh, did he sign the petition? I thought I saw that name somewhere. Do we have him on the, I, I can't find, oh, here it is. Owner's signature, yeah, well, I see you. I don't, I don't-
This might be it down below.
I think that's her signature, Jessica's signature, isn't it? Oh, okay, alright, so he, alright, I see, okay, that's fine. Okay. Now, like the last petition, do we have a copy of your license?
Um, she doesn't have in paper, but she does have in picture, does have.
Okay, could I see the picture of your license?
Yes, she can.
We're gonna have to put her on that one, too. Okay. Okay, thanks. Let me see what we got here. Alright.
In those pictures, she has the plan of the house, um, the classes, um, certificates, too, and the license of it.
Okay, alright.
The pictures of the daycare, probably, too.
Oh, okay. Did you show this to your friend there that didn't come in with pictures?
That's what I was telling her now. We didn't know about the pictures, so she's prepared now.
Alright, okay. So, we've got the, is it in the activity room? Is that where it is here, or? Where, where do you have the daycare? Oh, outdoor play, okay, that's outdoor play. And where, where do you operate your daycare in this place? Yeah, that's okay.
So in the living room, she, they would come in and slam the door, and then they would stay in the living room. There's access to the kitchen also.
Yeah. And then you go out to an outdoor play area?
And exit, and then the playground.
Okay, okay, and then they, okay. The activity room. Okay. What I'm gonna have you do is the same thing that we're gonna have her do. I'd like you to print those out and submit those to Dolores, so she can give us copies, alright? Why don't you guys go have a seat back there again?
Yes.
Jay doesn't wanna give you codes. Okay, and to, I, I guess just to move this along a little bit, I'll ask a couple of questions, and we'll, we'll let the board ask some questions as well. And that's, what are your hours of operation?
Okay, so she did work as assistant, um-
What, what are her hours?
Oh, I'm sorry. So it'll be seven AM till five PM, I'm sorry.
Seven to five, is that Monday through Friday?
Monday through Friday, too.
And how many children does she have?
She does have four.
Four children?
And it'll be for six. Her license is for six.
So she's watching four right now?
Four right now.
Okay, so right now she has four children, her license is for six, we understand that. And does she have children of her own?
Yes, she has one daughter.
And how old is her daughter?
Okay, so she actually, actually she has two daughters. Uh, one of them stays in the daycare, um, I mean, uh, do they care, confiança não, desculpa? So the one that stays in the daycare is two years old.
Two years old?
Yes.
So it'll be four children plus her two-year-old?
Yes.
Okay, alright.
And the older one is seven years old.
Okay, and she goes to school, does she go to school over at South Yarmouth Elementary also?
So hers is, um, M small?
Oh, okay, ME small, right, okay. And you got the backyard, so there's no kids in the front yard, right?
No, it doesn't.
And, and how about parking, when the parents drop off, do you have adequate parking for them to pull in and pull out?
Um, it's appropriate for fi- um, six cars.
Well, you know, they're, they're just picking up and dropping off, though, right?
Yes, uh huh, yeah, normally it will be always like that.
Okay, alright, so, it sounds like you got adequate parking. Alright. And who else lives in your house?
So it'll be her husband and her two daughters.
Okay, alright, husband, two children, alright. Alright. Well, um, it seems that we have similar issues than we had with the last petition, so might I suggest that we continue her matter as well to the same night? And she can supply us with the diagrams and a copy of her license. And, and pictures as well. So the same thing that we just asked this lady behind you, um, if you would do the same, alright?
I had a couple other questions, too.
And, and Dick may have some questions, or anyone else who wants to ask questions.
Are the area for the children is in the basement?
Sorry?
Is part of the, uh, area for the children in the basement?
Yes.
Is there another egress down there, or bulkhead, or, or window, or door?
Okay, so, yes, it does has an emergency exit, um, they did, um, they did license the bottom part, the agency, so, yes, the, they have- It does has a small window.
How small?
A small window in the bottom.
Somebody get out of it.
Yeah, there's two emergency exits.
And this property's been inspected and, and looked at by the authorities and the state, state authorities, and they were comfortable with that area?
Yes, they did, they did approve it.
What do you mean by a small window when you're talking about that? I mean, just like one of those regular little basement windows like this?
Yes, it will be like a regular down basement.
Yeah, I think we'd like to see picture of that, too. And I'd be a little concerned that if kids are playing down there and there's no other egress at all, like a bulkhead or something, then, uh, that would be a concern that I might have anyways. Also in driving by today, the driveway can only take two cars. It's not a whole lot of parking area there. And the other side of the duplex, who, is that a tenant, or is that an owner?
Okay, okay, so the, in the other duplex, um, it is another renter. Um, he, the, the, the parents can also park there, too. It's authorized to park there, too, if they need. So, yes, there is another person living next to it.
And they're okay with this, uh, daycare running here?
Yes, I do agree with it.
Okay. So, Mr. Viera owns the whole building, correct?
Yes, it is. He owns the whole property.
He did, does he live there or not?
No, he doesn't.
Okay.
Do we cover the fencing issue? Is there any fenced in area for the children to play outside?
Okay, so, yes, um, the playground is all over the fence, and it is the high, the, the high of it, um, it's authorized for EEC, so, yes.
Pictures of that would be good, too.
Yes, então fotos of the playground in the-
Is it the whole house backyard, or just half?
Only her part of the house.
Okay. Busy road, too.
Busy road. I'm more concerned about drop-off and pickup on that road.
I, I think what we should probably do is the same with this petitioner as the last one. We're gonna get this information, we'll come back. And then I think we should have a, a discussion.
Yep.
About both these petitions.
Yep.
Alright, the, the pros and the cons, and see what we can come up with.
I would agree.
Good idea?
Yep.
Okay. You have anything else that you'd like to add at this time? Okay, what we'd like to do is we'd like to continue your matter until January twenty-fifth. It's the same we did with this lady. We need pictures of the inside, we need that di- We need that diagram printed out. We want pictures of the outside as well and a copy of your license.
Yeah, I'm confused why the state website doesn't have either of these places on their website.
Okay. So we need you to sign an extension agreement. If you can go over there and just sign that.
Make a motion to continue?
Okay. Motion made by Jay to continue the matter until January 25th. They have a second?
Second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. We'll see you, ladies, on the 25th. You're going to be here, right?
I will. I'll work more on the speaking part.
All right, if you just go over there and sign that extension agreement right there, we'll see you all on the 25th. All right. If you have any questions, you just call Dolores and ask her, okay? She'll take care of it, all right? All right. Thank you very much. We appreciate your time. All right.
Make a motion to approve the minutes from December 14?
Yes. Motion is made to approve the minutes of December 14th. There is a second?
Second.
Seconded by Dick. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to approve the minutes?
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? Hearing none. Is that the only set of minutes we have?
Those are the executive minutes.
Let me take a look at that.
All right, thank you.
Yes. I have a motion to approve the executive session minutes of December 14th, 2023.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. I was... I'm not caught up with where you're at. I'm sorry.
We're just approve the minutes for the 14th. I made the motion.
And Dick? Yeah.
We're working on the...
They were approved unanimously. We thought we heard someone who might have had a question. And now we're just going to approve the minutes of the executive session minutes of December 14th.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Second. Jay, Dick, seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? None? That yours? Yeah, go ahead. You can have that back. I shouldn't have taken it out of your hand. No, I know. Contaminated. Okay, motion with you in?
So moved.
Yeah. All right, we're good.
All right. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you.